Meeting in September. And I'm sorry, it's our second meeting in September. Man, the month is getting away from me. Uh, and an important meeting nonetheless with the presentation of the budget. Um, if I get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a prayer from Greg Bradshaw, Executive Pastor of Harvest Church in Westfield.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I don't see the pastor. Kurt, you're a designated pastor relief counselor. Could you say a prayer for us, please?
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather as a community to do your work in serving our residents within the city of Westfield. Look over us and give us guidance as we make decisions and we think of not only ourselves, but those that live in our community and the betterment of our community as a whole. In your name, amen.
President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Welcome to our council meeting this evening. May we please note the presence of quorum.
Kurt Waninger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff.
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next order of business is approval of minutes from the September 8th, 2025 meeting, assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review those. Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Counselor McCarty.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Dart. I'm a little jumpy today, must be the caffeine. Um, yeah, we have a motion at a second. Maybe call the roll.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next order of business is approval of claims this evening, assuming everyone's had the opportunity to review those. Need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Dart, seconded by Counselor Waniger. Seen no other discussion, maybe call the roll.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff, oh, sorry, he's not here. Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
We do not have any changes to the agenda this evening. Director Todd, do we have any residents who wish to address the council this evening?
We do, we have one. Patrick May.
Great.
My name is Patrick May. I'm a proud resident of Westfield. I have the honor of serving as the President of Board of Directors for the Westfield Pickleball Association. And some of our members and Board of Directors folks are with me this evening. I know your job is often thankless at times. Tonight is not going to be, however. I stand before you today to express our sincere gratitude for your unwavering support and also to passionately advocate for further development and maintenance of pickleball facilities in our beloved city. The WPA is a dynamic organization, rapidly growing nonprofit. Now we boast nearly 100 members. Our mission, if you're unfamiliar, is to promote pickleball as a healthy, inclusive, and multi-generational sport that fosters community engagement and social interaction. Since our inception earlier this year, we have been committed to community outreach and hosting events that have significantly expanded our membership and our reach. With that, we are extremely grateful for the resurfacing of the courts at Quaker Park, and we thank you. The improvement has already made a profound impact on the safety and playability of Quaker Park. In a growing community such as Westfield and certainly as taxpayers, we all understand and fully appreciate the budgetary limitations of a city like ours. As important as roads, crossroads, roundabouts are, those items don't bring us closer as a community. And we don't have to look very far to see what a community split looks like. However, things such as our parks, our annual farmers markets, our summer concert series, and our abundant trail system makes our community whole, so we cannot forget those. We firmly believe that Westfield can be the center, the epicenter for the Midwest for pickleball court play. It's a vision that requires effort and a determined organization to support the city. To realize the vision, we need to build world-class pickleball courts. The courts need to be able to expand for our over 62,000 population now, the city, but also the visitors that we welcome and desire to bring here, and we want our visitors to stay on the weekends or the weeks when they come for the big events. World-class facility pickleball courts can be built to utilize and to offer youth organizations free play. It can bring in amateur pickleball associations, and it can be the center in the Midwest for professional tournaments, bringing in dollars to Westfield. Now whether you love pickleball, you're an avid pickleball player, you're just an occasional dinker, or you hate the sound of the pickleball noise, the data on pickleball is irrefutable. It's the fastest-growing sport in our country, it has been for the last 10 years. But I'm not here to share boring data and statistics with you. Those can be found pretty easy. What I'm here to tell you is that pickleball really is more than a sport in a community. It's a catalyst for positive change. It provides a safe and healthy alternative to digital distractions, helping to counteract social isolationism and negativity that we see that's all too present in our society today. Our association, the WPA, is dedicated to enhancing the presence of pickleball in Westfield, and we have a broad volunteer base ready to assist in fundraising, clinics, and event management.
Sir, I hate to say this as an avid pickleball player, and I would love to second everything you're saying, but we only allow three minutes, but if you could wrap it up pretty quickly.
I am on the wrap-up paragraph, thank you, Patrick. In conclusion, good timing, we urge the City Council to continue supporting the development of pickleball facilities in Westfield. Together, we can create a vibrant community that benefits all residents. Your support will not only elevate the sport, but also enrich the lives of countless individuals and visitors to our city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, this evening, we're going to have a special presentation this evening by our Director Kevin Todd from the Community Development.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd, Director of Community Development for the City of Westfield. I also will not be boring you with statistics and data this evening. There is some of that, but really, the structure of this update, I want to highlight a couple of things. Really, the department structure and some of our responsibilities. You see the first slide here. And then I want to hit on some of the highlights and statistics that we have seen in 2025, and then I'll wrap up by hitting some things in 2026 that we helped to accomplish. So with that, we'll jump right into our department structure. As you can see, we are broken into really five different divisions. Planning and zoning has two kind of sub areas within the planning and zoning division, building division, compliance division, and administrative support division. And this is important, this is something that we were able to kind of finalize the structure of this, really this year. We've been working towards this for the last handful of years, and we're finally able to put managers in each of the positions there, managing each of the divisions. We were able to, you know, develop some hierarchy in our, in our structure, and I want to go through a little bit what each division kind of does, and then we'll get into the rest of the presentation. So for the current planning team, there's four of them that really handle really what probably most people think of the day-to-day activities of a, of a planning department, zoning administration. They really coordinate all of the activity regarding Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, our Technical Advisory Committee, and so on. You know, handling the, the, the planning review for development projects, working with developers on, you know, their development projects and potential zoning petitions. Spend a lot of time in meetings with potential developers, really prior to filing anything with the city. We're, we're working through with them what, what our comprehensive plan talks about. We're working through them what our standards are. So by the time it gets to the public setting, the developer and petitioner are, are well aware of what the expectations of the city might be for that project. Spend a lot of time responding to development inquiries and zoning inquiries from the public, as well as just, you know, the development community in general. And, and we do spend a lot of time coordinating with Economic Development Department, Mayor's Office, on public-private partnership projects. By the time, you know, those things are to a point where, where they're engaging in a land use discussion or a zoning discussion, my team is engaged in those conversations, and we help talk through site design and building design and those kinds of things. Long Range Planning Division, we have three full-time folks that work on this team, and we've been fortunate enough to have a, a planning intern join our long-range planning team for the last couple of years. Most recently, Emmy Fox there was with us from January through August of this year. And we were able to give her, I think, a pretty meaningful experience where she was able to directly help our team with the work that they're doing in, you know, working on our comprehensive plan and other updates to other strategic plans and master plans that the city's working on. This team also manages our land use data and provides some analysis for that, and they're responsible for our public engagement and education. Things like pastry with a planner is, is run by the long-range planning team. Our building division consists of a building commissioner and an assistant building commissioner, as well as three additional inspectors. Again, as you might imagine, their primary responsibilities include reviewing permits for compliance with code, inspecting buildings as they're being built for compliance with code, answering questions either by builders or contractors or members of the public regarding code, code-related issues. And they also do their own management of certain part of our data, specific to permits and inspections, and they also report monthly to the county some of that information, which is information that we use as a, as a, as a broader team in presentations like this, which we'll get to. Our next division is compliance. This maybe formerly was referred to as Community Development Coordinator or something. It was a, it was a little bit of a clunky name. We've rebranded it this year as, as compliance or code compliance. These folks handle all code enforcement activity with the city, primarily including tall grass and weeds, which really takes about 60% of, of their effort on code enforcement. Trash and debris cases, which is probably another 30%. Illegal uses and general nuisances, nuisance, probably total another, the, the rest of it, about 10%. They are a little bit unique, maybe from other code enforcement divisions in the state, where they will, they will do permit reviews for us as well. They're handling the zoning review of all residential permits and a, and a good majority of our commercial permits. They handle all signed permit reviews, temporary use and event permits, and other permits like that. And they help with inspections as needed and spend a lot of time also answering questions. They're kind of a Swiss Army knife for us. I mean, they, they kind of have their feet in both the planning and the building parts of what we do, so, so they're really able to be a good resource for both of those teams and, and additional support. And one of the things we were able to do this year is hire a floodplain manager that is directly responsible for, well, just as it says, administering our floodplain and, and being responsive to FEMA and the restrictions of, of things that are in the floodplain. So that's a new position for us, and it fits really nicely with the compliance inspector. And our last group is our administrative support team. There's three folks there that really handle all of the billing activity for our department, including all invoicing and payment processing, as well as handle a lot of those responsibilities for other teams within the city. So as, as you can imagine, we have a, we generate a lot of invoicing needs and billing needs with the permitting activity and the plan review activity, and, and they handle all of that. They also do the front desk customer service responsibilities. They help support our Plan Commission, BZA prep for the planners. They also respond to all Freedom of Information Act and access to public records, which is the APRA acronym up there, requests, and they provide clerical support for other departments and divisions of the city. So in 2025, so far, I mentioned the department restructuring. We were able to establish managers for each division. We hired a floodplain manager, hired an additional administrative specialist, and a long-range associate planner this year. We did say goodbye to one of our long-term team members. Nancy Warner retired this year in May. Well-deserved send-off there, so a little bittersweet there for that. We've, we've done a, a pretty good job, I think, of with continuing education. We've sent several members to CPM, Certified Public Manager Course that Ball State offers. That's a, that's a two-year course. We've sent two people through phase one this year, or last year, this year, last year and this year. We've sent three team members to the advisor training that the city offered, and the, you know, a couple, a couple of our team members, in addition to our, our floodplain administrator, went through NFIP training, which is Floodplain, National Floodplain Training. So we have, we have two people there that can, can jump in when needed, and we also provide a customer service training to our administrative support team, and that was training that was created in-house that we, that we created and, and presented to them. We were also involved in the addition of two riverfront district, two new riverfront districts in the city. We worked with legal and economic development on that. We also worked with the Parks Department on administering the first round of Neighborhood Vibrancy Grant Award, which totaled over $160,000 in that first round. We helped, helped implement the food truck permitting system, and we've purchased new software that, getting ahead of myself here, but we're looking to unroll next year to, that will really help support both internal and external systems that we have in place for submitting permit for review, submitting inspections for, you know, scheduling inspections. It can help with our internal workflows, both within our department and include other departments. So we're excited to be building that out and looking forward to using that in 2026. We continue to update the comp plan, right? This is something that began in '24. All of this year has been dedicated to working through that process, a, a number of meetings with steering committees and focus groups and other public meetings, and we're, we're in the draft stage now and getting to the, to the end of that process. But what this will ultimately include is a new placetime map that will replace our current, our, our future land use map that's in our current comprehensive plan. It's also going to provide guidance for downtown, for village development, other economic development areas, and other cultural things like, like arts and things like that in our, as we, as we develop in the future. We've introduced a new, a new zoning overlay in our downtown. It was introduced as the Park and Jersey Street Overlay. We're going to rename it the Grand Junction Overlay to coincide with other branding and naming that other, other documents are using. But essentially, this is, this is one of the first steps to really updating and modernizing our, our zoning code to be more consistent with the type of development that we're anticipating. All right, so jumping into some stats. So this is, this is, uh, this is kind of an overview of our building permits, really from the months of January through August, because we do a month end, as I mentioned. There's a month-end report that's sent to the county, so I don't have September data yet. So I looked at everything here, and this presentation will be from the perspective of January through August, just for, for some context. But as you can see, there's a little bit of a jump in activity from 2020 to 2021, and then, since then, it's been pretty consistent. And this is really just representing new, new permits, right? New single-family permits, new multifamily, new commercial. This does not include additions or remodels or anything like that. That adds roughly 200, 250 to each of those numbers by year end. So really, the thing that I, I kind of noticed in looking at this chart is you can, you can notice the trend is, is really driven by single-family residential, right? The overall, the top line there, the blue line, is the overall total. That red, the red bars are single-family residential by year. The, the yellow is multifamily, and that has a different trend, right? You start to see that increase incrementally over time from 2020 up to 2024, where we hit our peak during this trend period, and it started, it's, it's gone down, right, since then? So just noticing a trend. We've seen our commercial permits really steadily kind of increase by a couple every year, so that's, that's good positive momentum. This chart represents, it's total value of permits issued in millions. So what that is, is it's really the cost of construction, right? It's not necessarily assessed value. It's at the time a permit is issued, how much does this project cost to construct? That's what's being reported on a permit, and that's the data we're collecting. So this is those, this is those numbers in millions. So as you can see, in 2020, we went from 287, 287 million to this, up to 476, and kind of remained in the 460s range for a few years there, jumped a little bit last year, and then this year, we had a, a, a really significant jump up to 759. I think that's, well, that is accounted for because of the community hospital permit that came in. That's a $210 million estimated cost of construction, so that's going to really kind of increase that number. If you take that out, we're still, you know, well, we're still over the last year's number at this time. So, which is, which is kind of meaningful to me. If you go back to our permit data, you can see that our volume is down, you know, a couple hundred from this time last year. So what that means to me is, while maybe our volume has slowed down a little bit, we're still getting really good value out of the projects that we're approving, out of the projects that we're permitting, and the things that we're seeing come out of the ground. These are inspection numbers, again, kind of coincide with the permitting numbers, right? A pretty sharp increase the first couple of years, been pretty consistent ever since. Total revenue, so this is the, these are the fees that we collect for permit reviews and inspection fees and plan review for Plan Commission projects and zoning reviews and all of that, all of that together. These are all fees that we collect, again, January through August. And as you can see, that kind of trend shape there, it's, it's really consistent with this one, right? Which makes sense. Code enforcement, we have, we average about 80 or so code enforcement cases by this time, by August in, in any given year. And the thing that really I wanted to kind of make note of on this slide is that bottom line is the number of, of those cases that ended up going to court, which is, as you can see, it's a really relatively low number. And what that means is we're able to resolve, you know, all 80-plus of those cases outside of court with, with homeowners directly or business owners directly, which, which keeps all of our costs down, right? So kudos to the compliance team on that. And then here's our Plan Commission filings for the last handful of years, and pretty consistent, pretty steady. What this is showing is that brown color, that top color there is, is Platts that have been filed. The yellow color is development plans that have been filed, and the red color is PUDs or rezones that have been filed and submitted. And then what you can't see on there is a green, just because there's only, you know, a couple of them. Updates to our Unified Development Ordinance are also included in these numbers. That top line, again, the blue line is the total for those years. Pretty consistent over this time period. You see that spike in 2021. My, my best guess is that I think there was a lot of kind of pent-up demand through COVID. And once things started to open up again in '21, we started to see development kind of, kind of pick back up and, and make up some of that lost ground. And then the last chart I have is on BZA cases filed, again, kind of a pretty, pretty standard trend line here until this year, right? We see a big drop from, from the average, you know, around 30 to down now 13 this year. And the reason for that is last year or the year before, we, we made an update to our UDO. There's a, we, we kept getting variances for swimming pool setbacks, right, in people's backyards. There was, we had a standard that required them to meet all building setbacks, and, and that just became not, not something that people wanted to do. And they would go into the BZA and request a variance and, and get approved. I would say probably 90-plus percent of those got approved. So we changed the ordinance essentially to reduce that setback for those folks. So that's really, we've seen a significant drop in our BZA cases because of that reason. All right, so what do we expect in '26? As mentioned, I think we're gonna, we anticipate the adoption of the comprehensive plan. We expect to introduce it formally at the end of the year for adoption, which will carry over into the first quarter of next year for final adoption consideration. On the heels of that, we will begin updating the UDO, or at least begin the steps to update the UDO. I do anticipate additional consulting services needed for that. We simply don't have the bandwidth in-house to do that. I think we certainly have the ability to do it, we just don't have the, the capacity, so, the time capacity. And then we're going to continue our neighborhood village planning efforts, which have really already begun, and I just want to take a moment here to, quick side note plug. October 16th at 6:00 PM, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM at the library, we have a public input meeting, really for this very purpose, for village, village development. We've got some concepts that we want to get some public input on, so kind of be watching social media for that announcement further, but, so that'll be happening at, on October 16th as a public engagement opportunity. Speaking of public engagement, we, we do plan to expand our public engagement offerings and education that, that our long-range planning team coordinates. We're looking at developing or implementing a new process that when, when residential neighborhoods are at the point where the builder is ready to turn it over to the HOA, we currently have probably three or, two or three or four different departments that are involved in various kind of closeout inspections, if you will. There's an infrastructure inspection, there's landscaping inspections, there's other, other things there, and they're, they're not synced together, and we're looking to, to coordinate that under one umbrella, so there's one final closeout inspection, one final checklist that we'll be implementing next year. And then, as mentioned earlier, we're, we'll look to roll out our new software. We are hoping to add a new residential deck permit and the associated inspections that go along with that. We're looking to add a contractor license requirement, really to help keep accountability for, you know, quality control, work, of workmanship on, in the construction industry. We're looking to add a contractor license requirement, really to help keep accountability for, you know, quality control work, of workmanship on, in the construction industry. We currently don't have one. And I think there's a, there's a variety, I mean, some communities do, some communities don't. I don't know, I don't know that there's a, you know, everybody does it and we're not, we're the only ones not. I don't think that's the case. But it's something that we've, we've been wanting to do, just to add that additional accountability and protection for our residents. And then we're gonna continue with our educational opportunities, you can see there. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Director Todd this evening?
I got a couple. Great presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you go back to slide 13? You spent some time on that already, but, um, so the, do we have any idea how these numbers compare to other Hamilton County cities? I mean, obviously we've taken a, a drop in 2025, but my guess is that that would be consistent with other Hamilton County cities. Just curious, so.
I don't have that information offhand. I, I think that's something we're looking to, we're, there's going to be an additional presentation, because there's been some additional questions specific to multifamily permits and those kinds of things. And that's where we're anticipating getting into that, but.
Yeah, and keep in mind that consistently over the last three or four years, we've issued more building permits than the rest of the county combined. So it's going to be really hard for us to compare our numbers to, to the other cities because they're just not growing like we are. But that doesn't surprise me that we're seeing a dip. You know, we've talked about this, I know individually and as a group. We've been very strategic in slowing some of the residential development down due to the fact that we've kind of filled in our, our comprehensive plan. And anything that we do new going forward is getting into areas we've not contemplated a vision for. So, you know, we were very strategic in saying, we're going to tap the brakes a little bit. We're going to get through this comprehensive plan review and then I expect next year you'll see a surge again in terms of residential development. But we have said no, I can't tell you how many times I've said no to developers before it even got to you guys, simply because it was in areas we just didn't feel we were ready to address. So those numbers don't shock me. I hope that doesn't continue long-term, but I think it's more reflection of what we're doing versus what the markets are doing. I'm, I'm sure the markets have had some impact as well.
I would like to see that, though. I know you're working on the multifamily. The second question is, you know, I know this administration has been working hard to bring commercial businesses to Westfield for a number of reasons. And that number of 23 seems pretty low, you know, with all the work that the team has been doing. But from a, this only shows new construction, correct? So in other words, if an existing building is in the city and a commercial business comes to town, that's not included in these numbers, correct? So it would be interesting to also know how many commercial businesses in 2025 have come to town, both new construction and through existing buildings. In other words, another, so let me ask you this question. So one that comes to mind is, um, at 191st Street, there's a Starbucks, there's a cigar box, and maybe there's something else in there. I think there's two or three businesses in there. Does that, is that considered three new?
Yeah, so.
How, how does that work?
It depends on what they, what they, if they need to remodel the building, then there's a remodel permit. That's not reflected in these numbers. But if they don't, I mean, really, I think the only way we could probably track that information is through sign permits, which is not an exact science either. I mean, I guess if they don't need a sign, we won't know, but, or if they put a sign up and don't get a permit, we won't know. But we can get, we can get close, probably, but we don't, that's not something we track per se.
Kevin, what about like Isotopia and the Dialysis company that came here? They went into existing buildings.
Yeah, right. It'd be, like I said, it'd be through a remodel permit possibly or, or a sign permit.
And we can get that data for you. In my state of the city, we're going to talk about new businesses coming to Westfield, but that's a few months off still. But we're happy to provide that, but yes. Keep in mind, we did some, you know, when I was on council two years ago, we did a lot of spec buildings. I'm sure there was a build out that occurred when a business actually landed. So some of this could be dragged as well, where you see maybe credit in 2022 for a building that didn't get occupied until this year. So I think there's some, some things we have to dive into to bring more clarity of that, but we're happy to do that.
So Mayor Kevin as well, the question on valuations, unlike Counselor Dart, I didn't immensely number the slides, but I think it's back, um, right there. Does that take into account, when's community health valuation?
Yeah, it does. That's, that 759 number includes that, that permit.
Thank you. The other piece too, just as a thank you, the HOA turnovers. We've turned over a lot of neighborhoods in my, specifically my council district. We've had some great ones. They've been absolutely fantastic. Everything's been handled phenomenally well and we have not. Even so much that the mayor, myself and your team interceded on behalf of the residents. So I know that some of this is an outgrowth of that unfortunate process for those residents, but, but I do appreciate your team taking an active interest in, in looking at this from a different perspective moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. I can't take all the credit. We're, um, Parks and Public Works are heavily involved in that.
Correct. Thank you.
Can you go back to the last slide about the contractors? So for the, the licensing requirement, um, I just want to be careful with like kind of how we do that. I don't, I don't think it's right to have to, all these subcontractors have to jump through hoops and I hope there's no like fee requirement or anything like that, that we're thinking of. I just, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of subcontractors coming in and working on different buildings, commercial, residential. And I would just, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if you, how far you've gotten into it, but I just want to be careful on, on how we develop that, if we develop it. I just, I just want to make more red tape for, for certain things. I mean, that's what.
Yeah, understood. I don't know that we're too far into it. I think this is, this is a response to just a handful of complaints we, we've received recently over, um, you know, quality of work or not completing work or those kinds of things. Just make sure we, there's a little, there's an additional layer of protection of some kind or accountability built in.
I mean, I guess reviews, Googles, I mean, stuff like that kind of helped too. So I just don't want to make more red tape where we don't need to.
Yep, understood.
And last comment, I would say, kind of building on the mayor's quote is, and I don't want to speak for my fellow council members, but a lot of us ran on smart intentional growth within our communities and also having higher expectations of what developers are bringing to our community. And so Kevin, I appreciate you knowing that we have your support in that and bringing those to the council when you do bring those. I appreciate the effort you're, you and your team has put into that process to expect higher quality developments, especially in the areas of commercial and, and industrial type buildings. So thanks.
Any other questions this evening? Thank you. We appreciate that, Kevin, and we look forward to getting even more information from you in the near future. We're going to move on to old business next, which is ordinance 2555, which is the common council of the city of Westfield, Indiana, amending the parking regulations of the city of Westfield. We have our Deputy Mayor Danielle Carey-Tolan.
Good evening, councilors. For the record, Danielle Carey-Tolan. With me tonight is Sarah Correll with Ice Miller that helped draft the amendment to this parking ordinance. Obviously, we did not take the original and tear it apart like we probably should have. We took a very old ordinance and just made amendments to it based upon councillor's feedback. What we did is we consolidated the fees into an easy to read chart for the fees and just cleaned that up. And then I've had a few questions about comparison on how, how we would do three hours versus four hours. And I provided a analysis of the Levinson garage to you guys over the weekend, just to show that comparable garage that we would have here in the city. So basically, 10% of the overall parkers that are in the Levinson exceed that three-hour limit. So 90% are below that three hours. So that's a good comparison for us to, to look at. Also, just to reiterate on this garage, this is only 300 parking spaces in this garage, so it is underparked significantly. You know, there's 196 apartments that are getting permits as well to, to this garage. That's about 263 parking permits that will be issued in that garage. That leaves almost 64 spots available for individual to park in. And we've already done this study that's, shows the demand at 9:00 AM is 339 and at 8:00 PM it shows that our demand would be 392. So we know that this garage is going to already be overparked. So the way we're asking for this to be done is just to help make sure that the traffic and the turnover in this garage happen so people can utilize the garage.
With Old Town, wasn't there an agreement of like a 70/30 split of what they could use the garage for, for private parking?
For the residents, not for tenants. So they get one parking spot per bedroom. As far as their agreement, that, that is at 236.
Of the total spots?
Of the total spots. Yes.
Danielle, how does that work when, somebody, or Janelle, what does it also work when like their parents come or a friend comes to visit? Do they have to pay to park then?
Yeah, I want to back up just a moment and clarify in that 30/70 split. So there is an ability, there's a right for Old Town to reserve individual parking spaces for up to 30% of the garage, which is different than the number of monthly parking passes that are provided. So they have a total of 300 parking passes that they can issue toward residents and tenants total, but those will not be reserved spaces. They'll just be parking passes. They are opting not to reserve individual, individual parking spaces for their tenants or their businesses, but they would have the right to do that if they start to run into issues where there aren't parking spaces available and they want to reserve those. Regarding the question of people visiting, people visiting would have the same responsibilities and rights of any other person in the public that is visiting the garage, where they would be able to park free for three hours, but they would need to pay a daily rate if they were staying longer.
So they can give 300 parking permits that have no time limit on them per month? Is that what you said?
Yes, but the intent would be that people who are parking there for commercial purposes would park during the day and the people who are residents would be parking more overnight. So there's, based on the demand of when people arrive and leave, based on, you know, whether they're living there or working there, it doesn't mean that all 300 spaces are going to be utilized all the time by the people who have parking passes.
Because of those 300, you have 196 units. Of those 196 apartments, you have one in mostly two-bedroom apartments. I don't think they have any three bedrooms in their floor plans.
I don't believe so. If they do, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe they do. But so of those, I mean, roughly, you stated earlier that per their agreement, it was one parking pass per bedroom. So if it's a two-bedroom, they get two parking passes. So effectively, 196 is, with 300, is basically just for the residents. Obviously, we'd love them, love for them to be at 100% occupancy, but the odds of keeping that, maintaining that, although I'm sure they're going to do great, is probably pretty tough. But roughly, 300 is basically just for the residents.
Correct.
So you're talking about roughly 60 spaces in this garage?
Yes, based upon the calculation, that would leave about 64 spots available.
And then Director Fair, Janelle, you may be able to answer this better, but the future parking garages that we've already frankly approved, we've asked them to overpark, if you will, which is mutually beneficial, let's be clear, both to the city as well as the developer and their potential tenants or their residents or businesses. But we're adding substantially more parking versus what was decided, for whatever reason, to really make this parking garage pretty tight. Am I out of line there by saying that or?
No, you're absolutely correct. Roughly, we've added a floor of parking to the Park and Poplar development, as well as the Jersey 32 or the Grand development, to help accommodate the deficiencies that we already have in downtown and help take on some of the load that we're seeing as the union opens from Park Street restaurants, from businesses on Jersey Street, from people visiting the park or at, or at events. We should be at a slight surplus by the time the Park and Poplar and Jersey 32 projects come online.
Do you know what year this contract was signed between Old Town and the city?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It was under the prior administration that the original development agreement was, was signed.
Yeah, I think it was in our first year in office, if I'm not mistaken. It was fairly early.
For sure, you'd be in the council.
On council, yeah. Like 2019, 2020, somewhere in that range?
Any other questions this evening or discussion by the council?
I'll just make a minor statement, if you want to call it that. I've already conveyed this to the mayor, but I'll be a no vote tonight just because of, with all the correspondence I've had with residents, I know it's just an hour, but I'm sticking at zero to four hours for me being free. And then also, I'm just not sitting right with having event parking, the $10, $20 in there. So that's just why I'm voting no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCarty. Any other comments, discussion this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-55, second.
We have a motion made by Counselor Dart, second by Counselor Wanniger. May we call the roll?
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
No.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. Moving on to next order of business is ordinance 2556, which is the common council of the city of Westfield, Indiana, creating a new parking meter fund, 258. Once again, our Deputy Mayor Danielle Carey-Tolan.
Yes, for the record, Danielle Carey-Tolan. And before you is just to establish a parking meter fund. This is a fund, that is a non-reverting fund for the funds to go into for the parking fees for downtown Westfield.
Any questions or comments this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25-56 for the common council for new parking meter fund. Second.
We have a motion made by Counselor Wanniger, second by Counselor McCarty. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business this evening, we have 25, ordinance 2554, the Schlegel Commerce Park, PUD. Mr. Collingwood.
Yes, thank you, President. Members of the council, good evening. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item before you is a change of zoning request for what will be known as the Schlegel Commerce Park Planning and Development or PUD District. The subject parcel consists of approximately three acres and is located generally on the east side of Grassy Branch Road, south adjacent of the existing North Point PUD District and can be seen in more detail within the provided location map exhibit on the screen. The subject rezone petition encompasses permitted uses that generally reflect the enclosed industrial uses of the Unified Development Ordinance. In terms of development regulations, the proposed ordinance will heavily mimic the established North Point PUD standards, especially in terms of general zoning regulations as well as architectural character of the future development. The item in front of you this evening is for its first reading in front of the city council. The item is slated for a public hearing in front of the advisory plan commission at their October 6th meeting. With that said, however, the petitioner did hold a neighborhood meeting at the end of August and a copy of that general discussion can be seen in the provided exhibit as well. So Matt Pleasant, Pleasant Cities LLC is the petitioner's representative for this rezone petition. He plans on making a brief introductory presentation for the council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Ryan.
Evening, councilors. Thank you. It's been a while since I've been around. Matt Pleasant, Pleasant Cities LLC. I'm located at five-eight-two-one Julian Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana, four-six-two-one-nine. Tonight, I'm very happy to introduce you the Schlegel Commerce Park PUD. As Ryan has noted, that the proposed PUD is located at two-zero-one-two-five Grassy Branch Road on the east side of the street, north of North Circle Church. The site holds about three acres and there are trees surrounding the property. Austin Schlegel is the owner and current resident of the property. Some context around North Point PUD, as Ryan had indicated, is just the north, which was recently approved, I believe, at the end of last year, early into this year. We have the nursery to the east and then you have the Coventry subdivision to the west. And again, with all the North Point PUD industrial uses all the way wrapped up to the, to the north, it'd be the northwest, excuse me. Current site is zoned AGS F-one for agriculture. As you can see, the, which is also surrounding it, the industrial to the north. After a lot of discussion actually with staff and then we also met with the neighbors, the PUD is closely related. It is highly recommended to us that we write the PUD to where it is closely related as in designs from architectural standpoint and from a site design standpoint with the North Point Area Three PUD, which is adjacent just to the north. Again, we, the EI, the Enclosed Industrial is for more smaller scale uses. However, after speaking with neighbors and after talking with staff and actually even the intention of the owner right now, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't gonna be too many uses that were going to be destructive to the current owners, especially across the street. A lot of those uses that are struck out and you can see in the PUD are aimed to be at the larger scale, the big warehouses, the trucking companies. We want to make sure that semi trucks are not gonna be coming in and out, especially coming this far south. Kind of view this, view this development as kind of like the last stop of coming south from that, from thirty-eight, State Road thirty-eight, coming down. And then the church kind of being that backstop and nothing can really come further south from there. At the end of the, assuming if we go through the process, the, we intend to annex the property into the city of Westfield, it is actually not part of the city at this point in time. And then detailed development plan as well as dedicated, the required right-of-way. Right now, it goes right up to the street line. All that seventy-five feet half right-of-way will be dedicated at that point in time in the future. Again, we were originally supposed to come in front of the council around, in the end of August, but it was moved to tonight. We had already notified the neighbors of the community meeting, so we moved forward. Five neighbors attended that meeting and in addition, staff also attended that meeting. It was about two hours worth and a lot of the conversations about what we, what they did not want to see, which we have, we have sat down, we struck every single one that they said they did not want or they didn't want to have in there. So we, I put it in the PUD specifically to say we didn't want that. The other things were like lighting, the other things that we wanted to change was like site design itself. And then in addition to like having a mound with some trees on top specifically in the front. There was a discussion about adding some neighborhood uses. We're talking like a coffee shop, a bakery, a hair salon, barber shop. Although we, in this PUD, at this point in time, we have not included those in there. With discussions with staff, they weren't necessarily too thrilled about having those as options. However, I really wanted to make sure that we were hearing the neighbors and what they wanted to have, especially if they're intending to be living across the street from the development, that they actually have a use, that they actually would be able to use and partake in. So not ruling it out, it's still out in the air at the moment. If we hear back from them that they want specific uses like that, we're more than happy to consider those and probably add them into the PUD. The two exhibits here were just mainly about, these are like supplemental. There's not necessarily meant to like show the scale, this is not the intention. It's more about the architectural style and the design of the buildings. These are also in addition to the same exhibits that were in that North Point PUD Three, Area Three that was recently approved. So adding those, this is just in addition to those exhibits. Kind of went over this. If you do have any questions on that, the Q and A has been provided and you should be able to have it with you. At least it was part of this packet. This last slide is just mainly to focus on about just, just the changes that are happening in this area and the unforeseen, or what's happening. I understand, obviously, the, Kevin indicated that the comprehensive plan is intending to be changed very soon. However, I think in this, in this instance, this is just a good, good understanding that this is pretty much, like I said, the last site, at least on the east side of the street, that any, any type of industrial or business type of uses would end up coming further south from State Road thirty-eight. Before you start hitting that church, in addition, moving south would be a lot more of the quieter neighborhood uses, including subdivisions and residential or, or a commercial. Other than that, that is, that is it for me. If you have any comments or questions, I'm more than happy to answer them right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pleasant. So effectively, through staff, you're really complying with North Point's requirements. I mean, that's, that's effectively the plan. Obviously, there's some neighborhood comments, it looks like there were some commitments. Some of the questions that were asked, obviously, the state deals with drainage and other things of that nature. But I don't know, Ryan, if you want to talk a little bit about how we're kind of trying to mirror what North Point looks like. I know this is an introduction, but just.
Yeah, sure. So I mean, generally, I think they were trying to mirror the, some of the landscaping standards that you see in the North Point PUDs such as buffering and, you know, including onsite landscaping, things of that nature are gonna try to be mimicked as, at least as much as possible. And I'm trying to think off the top of my head what else was included in there. But at least at this point, landscaping was definitely something that was trying to be, trying to be translated to this PUD as well.
It looked like there were some screening concerns, just, you know, mounds and trees.
Yeah, yeah, the neighborhood meeting mostly consisted of just kind of permitted uses that, you know, some of the neighbors wanted, didn't want.
Downlights, signage.
Yeah, pretty, pretty standard, you know, neighborhood meeting discussions at that point.
And accommodations like that have been made with other developments, subdivision or other as well. So like Council, Councilman Tam said, basically, you know, mounting on the other side of the road with some landscaping. So when trucks are pulling in and out in late evening or early morning, it's not shining on those people's houses. The church is a little different, usually they're during, during the day, not the evenings as much and not on a regular basis. So I think also, you know, from my opinion, lower type uses, not trucking, big trucks coming in and out there or loud trucks banging, things like that. So and just, you know, as I mentioned earlier, just higher standards on the buildings, you know. So they look good in that area.
Any other questions, comments this evening? Thank you and good luck at the APC.
Thank you very much.
The next order of business this evening will go to ordinance twenty-five fifty-nine, which is the East Street and a hundred and ninety-sixth Street Annexation. Mr. Collingwood?
Thank you, President. Members of the council, again, good evening. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item before you is a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation request for what will be called the East Street and a hundred and ninetyth Street Annexation. The annexation will be brought forth via ordinance twenty-five dash fifty-nine, presented tonight for its first reading and public hearing. The total compiled annexation area is about nineteen point two acres in size. Parcels are generally located on the north side of East Hundred and Ninety-sixth Street and generally on both sides of East Street as seen in more detail within the provided location map exhibit as well on the street, as well on the screen, excuse me. This item is noticed for a public hearing this evening, has been properly noticed and advertised. Will be eligible for adoption at your first October meeting where the associated resolution and fiscal plan will also be presented. I am available for questions as well as the petitioner's representative who is also here. Thank you.
Any questions or comments this evening? We do need to conduct a public hearing on this. We will start the public hearing this evening, we'll open it up at eight PM. Mr. Plankis is choosing not to give me a head fake today, which I appreciate. We'll close the, just making sure you're paying attention. We'll close the public hearing this evening at eight PM. This as well. Our next order of business is a resolution for the Westfield Washington Public Library Three-Year Growth Appeal. And before us this evening is our fantastic director of our library, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I'm gonna put this down, I'm not as tall. I mean, I'm Cheryl Solers, Executive Director of the Westfield Washington Public Library. I, I'm here tonight seeking your support for the Westfield Washington Public Library's Three-Year Growth Appeal. What, the Westfield Washington Public Library Board has unanimously approved the appeal for our, at our September tenth board meeting. This appeal is not only mathematically justified, but essential to support the library services for the fast-growing city of, the fastest-growing city of Indiana and the sixth-fastest-growing city of the United States. Since opening our new forty-three thousand square foot building in June of two thousand and twenty-four, we have experienced record-setting growth in library card registrations, visitor counts, and material checkouts. Since July first, two thousand and twenty-four, we have issued five thousand five hundred and ninety-three new library cards. Total circulation has increased to twenty-two percent, which was over five hundred thousand circulations last year. Visitor count has increased by twenty-nine percent. To meet the expanding needs of our community, we are seeking support for, in the following areas. Personnel, we need to, additional part-time library assistants, a full-time children's librarian, a full-time library assistant in technical services, a part-time events planning and meeting room coordinator, part-time building maintenance position. Also, we're wanting to increase our fringe benefits for our staff. The Indiana Public Retirement System enrollment for our full-time staff. Four-three B match increase and an increase in our health insurance contributions. Collection purchases of increase by, we want to increase by fifty percent in both print and electronic media. Evergreen Consortium membership expands our patron access, but local demand has created long wait times. Expanding our holdings will significantly reduce wait times and improve patron satisfaction. Expanded programming increase offerings for all age groups with a focus on early literacy, teen engagement, and lifelong learning opportunities. Technology infrastructure, as staffing needs grow, we must update, provide updated technology to ensure continued high-quality service delivery and efficient operations. We also need to, our utilities and facility costs rise. Additional funding is necessary to maintain a welcoming and functional environment for our patrons. If we don't get the appeal, we will not be able to fund the Indiana Public Retirement Enrollment for Full-Time Staff, not be able to increase the library contributions to health insurance premiums, and we will, we would still increase the budget collection, but not by as much. The two thousand and twenty-six certified assessed valuation increased eight point three-nine percent and we're in, we are anticipating a total tax rate to remain flat in two thousand and twenty-six, including this growth appeal that we're asking for. Due to the recertification of the net assessed values, which I'm sure you're all aware, we will be reducing our debt service fund operating balance, so there still is no tax increase. On behalf of the library board and the Westfield Washington community, I ask your approval for the three-year growth appeal.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any questions this evening, discussion?
Just for clarification, the appeal of two hundred thousand, is that per year or is that?
That's just a one-time.
One-time, okay.
This year, yes.
Cheryl, just out of curiosity, twenty-nine percent attendance utilization of this space, is that just in the first year here?
In the new library, yes.
So the first year, we've, we've attracted twenty-nine percent more, you've had five hundred thousand more. Can you also, this is more personal, I hate to ask you this, but the digital collection, you are actually limited, it's my understanding you're limited in terms of the number of checkouts and you have to reorder or repurchase those digital rights. So frankly, over, potentially over a long term for a popular item, you may actually be spending more for that digital item through the Evergreen system. That's my language, I may not be explaining this right. But a long-term cost from the library, I think some people think because it's digital,
Yeah, we pay for a license.
Your costs go down, but it may actually be the opposite due to popularity.
It is the opposite. They're digital, the digital materials are more expensive per item than the print materials to purchase. And we get them for, some we can, we will, we, we are able to keep forever and some, it's just a license for two years and after the two years, then we have to either re-up or.
Evaluate where you're, where you're at. Thank you. Sorry, that was more of a personal question about the business of the library. Mayor, I know you've served on the library board, do you have any comments this evening?
No, I just, I just smile at that twenty-nine percent increase. We actually had a board member a few years ago, when we were going down this path, question why we even, people don't use libraries anymore, do we really need to build a new one? And, which was shocking to hear come from a board member, but it just proves what Cheryl knew all along, that when you improve the facility and add more amenities, people will come. And that is certainly happening at our library.
Thank you. This is a resolution this evening, so it is eligible for adoption. Do we have any more comments, questions? We need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution for the Westfield Washington Public Library Three-Year Growth Appeal.
Second?
We have a motion made by Councilor Wanniger, second by Councilor McCarty. Seeing no other conversation, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. The next item of business is the Westfield Public Library Twenty Twenty-Six Budget Binding Review. Once again, Cheryl, you're up.
The Westfield Washington Public Library respectfully requests a binding review from the Westfield City Council as our proposed twenty-twenty-six budget exceeds the four percent maximum levy growth quotient. We require physical body approval in accordance with Indiana state regulations. The Westfield Washington Public Library Board approved this proposed budget at, also at the September tenth library board meeting. The reason we are exceeding the four percent is to fund the following capital projects. Funded by reserved funds from the sale of the previous library, excuse me, previous library building, those projects are as follows. The completion, the final paid phase of our building project. Construct an outdoor classroom and event space on the northeast portion of the library property. This space, developed in partnership with the Westfield Washington Township, will offer outdoor storytimes, fundraisers, community events, and quiet, quiet reading areas for walking, along our walking paths. It will serve as a key link between Grand Junction Plaza and our library campus, uniting the downtown corridor. We hope to break ground in the fall, in this fall of two thousand and twenty-five and have it open for the use by May of two thousand and twenty-six. And we have estimated the cost to be around five hundred thousand dollars. The second thing that we would like to do with this, with these capital funds is to, in anticipation of the continued rapid growth, we seek to purchase land for a potential library branch. This may be pursued in collaboration with, with the township again. May include a park-like library concept. We haven't really gone down that path quite, quite yet, but those are some options that we have. The estimated cost of this purchase would be anywhere between five hundred thousand to one point five million. We're not sure of that either. Another option that we might pursue is an expanded makerspace or co-working facility. Explore acquiring and repurposing a build, repurposing a building to house a dedicated makerspace and community co-working center. This space would enhance innovation, creativity, and collaboration through hands-on learning and flexible work environments. After only a year of service in our current makerspace, we have, we. in our current makerspace, we have we have pretty much outgrown that space. The estimated cost for this, we're thinking anywhere between 500,000 and 750,000. Tonight is the public hearing for the library's budget, 2026 budget, and the budget is up for final adoption at your October 13th board meeting or council meeting.
So what is the total request?
2 million. The total budget request is.
You have a budget, and then what is the increase? What is the dollar increase you're asking?
It's 2 million for the capital projects. Our total budget, I'm sorry, I didn't. Our total budget, and this is operating fund, debt service fund, and rainy day fund, is $6,433,300. Our operating budget is $4,668,800. And so the main thing, the main increase on our budget would be the 2 million for those capital projects, which goes over the four-year 4% growth quotient. So that's why we have we are thrown into the binding review.
And the 2 million is money you've already acquired from the sale of the land?
Yes, we already have that money, yes.
So it's not additional, any additional burden on the taxpayers of Westfield. Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Uh huh.
Okay.
That's a key element. This is eligible tonight for a public hearing. As Cheryl stated, it will be considered at our next council meeting for passage. So we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at 8:12 PM this evening. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:12 PM this evening. And this will be eligible for adoption and consideration for their October 13th meeting. Thank you very much, Cheryl, and thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you.
A great library. Thank you. Ordinance 2557, establishing police fund 272, which is vehicle replacement. We'll have a brief explanation from our deputy mayor, Daniel Carey-Tolan.
Yes, Cheryl was very excited that we had a Westfield library pin up here before she even got here, so.
How was the pin paid for?
Obviously not by us. Transit library, yes. Sorry, for the record, Daniel Carey-Tolan, before you, you have an ordinance to establish fund 272. This is a vehicle replacement fund for the police department. This fund would be a non-reverting fund for when they have accidents or repairs to vehicles that they're getting insurance claims back. So this those funds would go into a fund for that way that they can then go back out and purchase a new vehicle and the replacement of that fund or that vehicle. So it's just a cleaner way than using dollars, general fund dollars for those replacement vehicles than.
What this also does, though, is if insurance dollars are given back or given to the police department, it doesn't go into the general fund and gets lost.
Correct.
Right? Goes into this non-reverting vehicle replacement fund where it can only be used for vehicles.
Correct, for the police vehicles.
For a police vehicle, yeah.
Better accounting.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments this evening? This is introduction this evening. Seeing none, we will move on to our next ordinance this evening, which is ordinance 2558, establishing fund 245, which is a police department event fund.
Yes.
Daniel will also explain this.
Yes. This again is a non-reverting fund to establish for the police department. This is a fund for when they have special events like Colts Camp, Liv, potential FIFA, and other other major events that could be happening over the course of the year. Those funds would go into there that they get from those events, and then they would pay out the police officers that they have from other municipalities. So it's just, again, another pass-through for us. That way, it's more accountable, so we know where the funds are at.
Also ensures more timely payments, though, to officers that work those events as well. Any other questions, comments this evening? Thank you. We will move on to the main event this evening, which is the 2026 city budget presentation. I'm Mayor Willis.
Thank you, Council Tam. Budget season, always a fun time of year for city staffs and for our council. And I'll just start by saying that this has been a very interesting budget cycle. We found out as late as, I think, last week that the county had made some misinterpretations of the new SEA1 bill, and that assessed values that we thought we were going to be playing with for funding was not accurate. And they had overshot that number by, I think the number was 625 million for the entire county. We're gonna be fine. You know, we've cut, as you guys know, we've cut this budget, and we're gonna be putting more money back into a rainy day fund for the unknown of what's coming. But that just shows you what kind of a crazy year it's been with this budget. And one reason why we're so late getting to you all is we were waiting on clarity on exactly what the impacts of SEA1 was. So here we are. Let's get let's get started. Next slide. Just to recap some things that we budgeted for in 2025 that are that are wrapping up here this year. First off, completion of Simon Moon Park Phase 1. A lot of investment in public safety, especially in the police department from a technology perspective. We did complete several roundabout landscape treatments. We have a few more yet planned this fall. We completed three roundabouts, 181st Street and Wheeler, 161st Street and Spring Mill, and 151st Street and Town Road. One project that we budgeted for this year that's not going to get completed is the tunnel. And the culprit, again, is like we've had with other projects. One was utilities, two, some pushback from an adjacent landowner that eminent domain was necessary, and it got tied up into some legal back and forth that's going to cause that to delay into early next year. Also, we added several outdoor warning sirens to reach further into the township. And then, of course, we're on our second round right now of grants for the new Neighborhood Vibrancy Program. Next slide. So impacts. This year, we're losing roughly $2.02 million in revenue. Anticipated lost revenues coming up in 2027 and '08, 10.6 million. And in 2029, the hits just keep coming. It's roughly $11.3 million in lost revenue. For context, and just kind of give you an idea, you know, that's equal to our parks budget for this year, roughly. And what you're seeing in 2027, 2028, almost matches the police department. So when you think about how do we cut to accommodate for these property tax cuts that came from the state, which I will say on the record, I'm very much supportive of, but it does have an impact. And when you think about 50% of our budget comes from public safety, and you guys start cutting 2, 3, 4, 5, $10 million out of your budget, it's really, really hard to absorb that and not impact things that I know we all prioritize, and that's public safety. Next slide. This is the big one, local income tax. Right now, this has no impact on us as a city. In 2026, our projected lit is 34.3 million. In 2027, we expect that to go up to roughly 38.2 million. Again, we're projecting here. But in 2028, that goes away. And that's a $43.6 million hit to our budget. Now, do not fret. We will address that, but understand that it will change how lit is done. And now the council, you, the council, will every year have to pass our lit rate, local income tax rate. So because there's no way the city can obviously absorb $43.6 million. That's over half our budget. So that's just something coming down the road. We wanted to plant the seed. Now, I know you guys all have been briefed on this, but I think it's important the public understands that changes are coming in the very near future. Next slide. So here's the timeline. Budget notice was posted on September 10th. You're getting your presentation, first presentation in public hearing tonight on the 22nd, and we will approve this budget on October 13th. Because of the late start on this, we don't have a lot of buffer here, gents. We need to pass it October 13th based on requirements and things that have to happen on the back end with the clerk treasurer's office. Next slide. So here are some of the highlights. We are going to actually reduce the city tax rate. Not by a lot. It's a very nominal amount. But I've committed to being fiscally responsible and every year trying to drop that just a little. I'm pretty confident in saying, we may be the only city in Indiana that's dropping their tax rate. I think maybe Fishers did as well because they they've got some money from Carmel that they hadn't seen in the past. But I can assure you, most cities are struggling with holding the line and keeping it flat. And we're gonna drop it just a nudge. Again, as I mentioned, 50% of the recommended budget funds our police and fire. And that's something that is only going to get more expensive as we grow as a city. And it's something that obviously is a huge priority for me, and I know it is you as well. Public safety is our number-one priority. And then also, we're going to be adding some pickleball courts and permanent restrooms at Freedom Trail Park, or at least that's what we're proposing. Freedom Trail Park, for those of you who don't know where it is, it's pretty hidden. It's underutilized, and we are planning on activating that park moving forward. Land is getting more expensive. Parks are getting more expensive. One department that has been hit hard by SEA1 is the Parks Department. And as a result, we have to maximize every existing park that we have. We're going to be spending 30-plus million dollars in infrastructure investments, another strong, robust year of improvements. Yes, another year of detours and delays and other things that make discomfort for our residents. But I think when it's complete, people will look back and be glad this happened. A couple of things are going to happen is Phase 1 of the widening of 191st Street will go as planned. Liv has zero impact on this project on the timeline. We will move forward. And that actually is going to start this fall with utilities being moved, but the widening project will really go into full force next spring. We have a couple of roundabouts planned on Grand Park Boulevard. I know you folks are familiar with a couple of these because we've had some safety issues on at least one of those intersections. Both those will be done next year. We will complete the Mone on Trail Tunnel at 161st Street. And of course, we have State Road 32 that will hopefully be wrapping up next fall. Next slide. Just showing a comparison of tax rates. I was at an event last week in Washington DC, and this lady swore her taxes are lower in Carmel than Westfield. I said, you are absolutely incorrect. Now, with the school referendums, that actually probably is true, because we have a growing school district and they have a declining school district. But our tax rate is, as you can tell, one of the lowest in the county, and we're in the top 10 in the state of Indiana. Very proud of that. It's really, really hard to be the sixth-fastest-growing city in America and keep a tax rate as low as we're keeping it. It's a huge challenge. I applaud the council, for all of you, for your guidance and wisdom and suggestions you've made. And I can assure the taxpayers that we are all collectively looking at this and doing the best we can to keep up with the growth, but keep your taxes low. Next slide. And that just shows you historically what's happened with our tax rate. It dropped. It's been dropping for a while, and you'll notice that we dropped our tax rate last year. We're gonna drop it again this year, not as much. My hope is that we can continue on that trajectory and just be fiscally prudent in what we're doing with the taxpayer dollars. Certainly, we benefited from growth in our assessed values. You know, Westfield is with the growth we've seen, with the quality of life improvements have been invested in by the city, that helps the land values, and it does help us keep our tax rates flat as a result of that. Next slide. So here's our recommended budget. I'm not going to go line by line through every single one of those. Just a quick snapshot. Total recommended budget is 80,100, I'm sorry, yes, 80,141,497.13. I'm just teasing on a 13 cents. Next slide. So we'll just go through real quick each department. Again, we're not, I know I've gone through with you guys line by line. I know you still have some follow-up questions that will get you answers here in the very near future. But that just gives kind of the summary of personnel, supplies, and services, and what that adds up to. I do want to draw your attention to the priorities for this for the administrative department, obviously outside legal services. We did hire a second attorney this year. Ms. Nicole's sitting here next to us. She's been a gem. But, you know, legal services will continue to be a challenge. We can't possibly hire attorneys to cover every legal situation that we have to face as a city. And as we continue to grow, economic development, all that stuff, it's very, very hard to predict attorney fees. And I don't expect that to go down significantly in the near future with all the growth that we're experiencing here in the city. But we are reducing the administrative budget by almost 5% in 2026. Next slide. City council, you guys are holding yours flat. You're neutral. Not a whole lot you guys can do to impact yours, quite frankly, unless you all want to take a pay cut. And beyond that, there's really nothing to share. You know your budget better than I do. So next slide. Clerk Treasurer's Office, she is declining, or declining, yes, reducing her budget by 5.16%. Her priorities obviously are the act for that we have annually, the gap audit, and then staff training and continuing education. Next slide. Communications will be dropping, Kayla will be dropping her budget by nearly 7%. We do have a headcount addition we're requesting for her group. By doing that, we're actually reducing that budget a little bit more, because originally we were planning on some services that would be required for us to outsource. We just don't have that capability. But this is one area we know it's not going to go down. It's just going to go up as we grow as a city, and felt like now was the time to strike and add a headcount addition. In doing that, we still were able to reduce the budget below what I had asked each department had to do, which was a 5% reduction. And then you'll see just some other general things. Westfield, our mayor's youth council is getting underway. The real effects, cost effects of that is this year, I'm sorry, 2026, this year, we're not spending any money or very little money on that group. One of the things that's not mentioned here in a priority that I would like to see happen if we get the headcount addition is I've been wanting to get a veterans coalition started. I think we're the only city in Hamilton County that doesn't have it. That's typically ran out your marketing or communications department. So I've tasked Kayla to start putting some shape to that. And if that headcount addition is approved, expect some more word on that coming up in the near future. Next slide. Community development is dropping their budget down 7%. Priorities, obviously Kevin's already talked a little bit about this, so I won't spend a lot of time, but the UDO is going to be the big focus. Downtown revitalization master plan, that should be coming to you all here shortly, but there'll be some additional follow-up work needed for that. And then, you know, we're going to hopefully continue the vibrancy grant program. We are dropping that significantly in terms of the amount we're going to budget. We do expect we'll have some carryover in the next year from this year's budget. But we'd like to keep the momentum that was created from that program. And it has been, if you go to those weekend meetings, which is for the HOAs, it's been wildly popular and of high interest to them. Next slide. Economic development. Janelle's dropping her budget by nearly 17%. And most of that is around some services that she had this year, which was really helping her ramp up her department. And she won't have those next year. She is asking also for a headcount addition, which I support. Primarily, this is around Grand Park. As Grand Park, the new district gets going, just managing the development, the roads, all the things that go into building that village out. We were going to have to pay a consulting firm to do that work. It was actually cheaper just to bring somebody in-house, and it also brings additional capabilities in-house that, quite frankly, we really need in economic development. So fully support that headcount addition. Next slide. Facilities and vents reduce their budget by 11.4%. Couple of things we're going to be doing, if you haven't heard, America will be celebrating its 250th birthday in 2026. And I've asked Matt and his team to double the budget for Westfield Rocks IV. I want to improve our fireworks display. We're going to add some additional things that the federal government's asking communities to do in celebration of this. It's going to cost a little bit more money, but you only turn 250 years once. It's going to cost a little bit more money, but you only turn 250 years once in a lifetime, if that, so we're going to lean into it and do some fun things to celebrate our history. And then also, obviously parking garages, you're all very familiar with that, we voted on some things today about that, but that is a new expense that's going to start perking its head with this department. Next slide. Fire department. Public safety is, we're not cutting public safety, just not going to do it. Their budget's actually growing by quite a bit, almost 16%. Some of it's around Station 85, some of it's around Staffing of 84, some of it's around a change in how we're paying our fire department. As you all know, we've had this discussion already, currently Westfield pays, I think, 25th or 26th in the, in the state in terms of how we pay our firefighters. To me, that's unacceptable. We need to be in the top 10, because I think at a minimum, we're in the top 10 in the state in terms of quality of life in a city, and we need to protect those that are, that protect us. So I've asked for an increase there that brings them parallel, quite frankly, compensation-wise with our police officers. We're going to treat them the same moving forward in terms of their benefits and in terms of their pay. And so it's a new way we're looking at it with a longevity pay component to it, but it's the right way going forward, and quite frankly, we won't see as big of increases jumping in the future years. It was just the first year in getting this program established and adding in this, this longevity pay. Next slide. Human resources, this is a minor miracle. We actually reduced it by almost 1%, and when you think that all the insurance falls under her care, medical insurance, the fact that she absorbed a significant increase and still cut a budget is, I'm not quite sure how she accomplished that, to be honest with you. Brady did an amazing job of really being frugal with her dollars, but there are expenses in her line items that she just can't control, and I know you guys are aware of that. Next slide. Informatics is dropping their budget by 6%. Some things that are going to happen, we're going to be going through a complete upgrade of all of our city cameras from a security perspective. We're going to be assisting with technology infrastructure, he will be assisting with technology infrastructure for fire stations 84 and 85. We're working on some citywide KPIs. You know, I promised when I became mayor, we were going to be more transparent in the good and bad of what's happening in our city, and we're starting to develop a transparency portal for residents to go and see anything and everything related to data from the city, from, from public safety data to the budget, to tax rates, to anything and everything. So I'm really excited. We're finally getting our legs under us to get this started, but there is a cost associated with that. Next slide. My budget, dropped it by 7.7%. You know, really, there's not a lot in the budget outside of salary benefits. Some of it's for training and travel. I do do a little bit of travel as mayor. As you all know, I just came back from Washington DC. I try not to travel too much, but when it comes to economic development, there are times you have to get on the road, and, and I needed a little bit of a budget for that. Next slide. Parks and Recreation dropping their budget by just around 2%. You know, the big things, their big priorities, obviously you've got Simon Moon Phase 2, although that one has actually already been budgeted and paid for. I don't know if it's been paid for, but it's been allocated this year. We have pickleball courts and permanent restrooms at Freedom Trail Park. The permanent restroom thing will also highly benefit the schools, because they use that for practice. In fact, the rugby team will be playing their games, if I'm not incorrect, at Freedom Trail Park. So having more robust facilities, like a bathroom, so people don't go into the woods and do things they shouldn't do, these are important steps in providing a better park system for our residents. And then just continued parks program for the community. I don't think there's been any significant changes there, other than I will say, and this has had some impact to Parks and Recreation, their budget would have gone down more. We're moving Molly Cunningham and the farmer's market under parks moving forward into next year. So right now, it's under community events, that's going to shift over to parks. We just think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, Chris's group does a lot of heavy lifting with the farmer's market because it's at Grand Junction, and it just made sense to move Molly over there, so that's a change that's coming. Next slide. Police Department, you're going to see a 10% increase. Additional officers, I know you were briefed by Chief Keen on the change that's coming around law enforcement in Westfield with new districts, with that's going to require more sworn-in officers, a couple more civilian staff members. Obviously, they're going to be knee-deep next year into the construction of a new headquarters, and that's going to play into this budget as well. And then we're also continuing to invest in technology around expanded data storage, body cameras for the officers, flock camera systems, all that kind of good stuff that your city needs to keep people safe. Next slide. Public Works, they're reducing their budget by 11%. Some of the priorities are around, obviously, the roundabouts and future work that's coming in 2027, 2028 with designing of three specific roundabouts. We've also, I also asked John to increase our reservicing budget. We have a major project next year happening in Village Farms. It was an inherited problem from the county when we annexed Village Farms many years ago. We literally have roads that are collapsing, sinkholes, we've got curbs that are demolished, and we're going to have to spend quite a bit of money in that neighborhood to get that up to where it should be. And then also, we're looking at, obviously with an extended trail system with now golf carts on it, we're going to have to look at spending a little bit more time, money, and energy around our, our trail system. And then I won't go too much into this, but these are just the additional budgets that we have with MVH, LRS, road impact, stormwater. I know you guys are familiar with that, but we wanted to capture that in this slide as well. Next slide. So next steps, we'll be back here, our next meeting on October 13th with hopefully a final reading and a budget adoption. We stand ready to answer any additional questions you guys have. I know we've gotten a couple emails today, we'll get those back to you ASAP, and any final changes you would like to see, we stand ready to, to listen. And with that, any questions?
Any questions this evening for the mayor, comments? I have just a comment. You started, you talked about roundabout opening and completion. You know, I have, I send you photos of roundabouts that are open and not quite completed. There's a clear distinction on that on landscaping, although we just broke ground on some landscaping on some roundabouts in my district as well, which I appreciate, but we opened up one in town, but that's not truly, it's open, but the landscaping piece is not completed. So how are we going to communicate when those, they get fully, in my, my language, completed?
Yeah, and we budget for that again this year. We, as you guys know, we have some catch-up. Decisions were made in previous administration to not do landscaping. A lot of that was originated around COVID and fear of what was coming with a decrease in tax revenue. We're going back and addressing those first, but even the new roundabouts, you know, we have two choices. We can keep the intersections closed longer to do the, to do the landscaping, or we just get it open and come back on the back end. So we're coming back on those, and I believe they've been budgeted as part of the project. It's just, we got to get back and get the work done, and that will be done at a later date, most likely the following year, but that's not necessarily a promise.
So on police and fire, you talked about increasing our fire pay and tying that with police. For recruiting and retention of our firefighters as well as police officers, where do you project out our fire and police to be? I know there's also pension-based issues as well, but can we talk a little bit about that a little bit deeper?
Right now, our police department ranks in the top 10 in the state in terms of how they're paid. Again, the fire department's like 25th or 26th. That's unacceptable, we got to close that gap. It matters a lot when you're trying to recruit, and with the rapid growth we're seeing right now in Westfield, you know, the, the fire department briefed us on, not only are we building two new fire stations right now with 84 and 85, but we know we've got three more coming in the very near future. For us to be able to attract people, we need to be competitive, and right now, to get, I think we had like 65 applicants, don't hold me to that exact number, but like 65 applicants for the next round of hiring we're doing. We're hoping we can get six, seven, or eight of those to be qualified, and to make it to the process where we can make an offer. It's very, very hard right now in the environment we live in, unfortunately, to find people who want to serve the community in public safety, and salaries matter. And so it's a lot of it's keeping up with the Joneses. We've been able to keep up on the police side. When I came into office as mayor, we were aggressive in addressing the police. The fire department has a contract, a union contract that expires this year. We're addressing the fire department this year, but it's got to happen. I think proof in the pudding, though, is Carmel pays number one in the state when it comes to fire department, and it's not even close. Even with this big jump, Carmel pays way more than we do. For the first time in the history of Carmel, they've got a lot of retirements happening, and they now are looking to backfill some open positions, and they opened it up to lateral moves from other communities. Carmel's never done that. Thank God, the city of Westfield, of all the four Hamilton County, or three other Hamilton County cities, we were the only city that didn't have a single firefighter apply for a lateral move into Carmel, the only city. And I think that speaks volume of the leadership we have in place right now, both from the city and the union side on the fire department. I think they see our commitment to improving their, the quality of their lives with salary and benefits and other things we're doing, and I think they also see a path of growth and opportunities. I think there's a lot of things that factor into it, but I can assure you, two years ago, if that would have happened, we would have lost a huge chunk of our firefighters to Carmel because morale was low and pay was not great. And so we need to get caught up with the Joneses so we don't have to fight so hard to protect the employees that we've invested a lot of money in to, to do what they do.
So you believe with this, effectively, we're catching up, if you will, this one-time investment will obviously have to increase, but the bigger jump, if you will, will help us kind of stabilize where we should have firefighters and hopefully even improve that in the future, near future.
That is correct. And again, the, the big jumps, year one, after that, it's just a longevity bump each year, and it's more predictable than we've had in the past. So I believe that years two and three, we won't see near the increase we would have seen if we were taking a different approach. And the other thing with the, with the contract with the firefighters, you know, we have agreed, both the union and myself, that we're going to bake into the equation the next three years of how those merit increases work with longevity pay. There'll be no renegotiation of those numbers. So we may jump all the way up in the top three or four in the state, and then the next couple of years, we may drop a little bit as other people play keeping up the Joneses. We're not going to do that. We're going to do it one time, will last, that'll last through the three years of the contract, and then when the contract comes back up for renegotiation, we'll revisit that. And if we've dropped out of the top 10, we feel like we're not competitive, the game's changed, we'll have to address it. But we have three years of stability right now, and I don't think the city's ever had that with a fire contract. So I think it's, this is the right approach moving forward.
Any other questions, comments this evening? This will be eligible for budget final reading and adoption on October 13th. Hope the number's lucky for you, mayor. We'll find out. So the, we'll move on to city council comments. Do we have a APC update? Oh, excuse me. It's, I drank too much caffeine today, like I said earlier. We do need to open up the public hearing for the budget. My apologies.
Lyndon Ass, 1122 East 161st Street, spoke with a lot of my friends and neighbors in the last while. Just had a few comments that we wanted to make. I was glad that the mayor came out with some information tonight. Would have liked to have seen that before this meeting. A lot of people were asking for that. Where is, where's the detail? We used to get packets that were almost an inch thick of information about the budgets before there was a hearing. It seems it's less and less, but at least we saw something here this evening. I did go to that September 8th special meeting, and some of my friends and neighbors listened to it too, because that was kind of a work session on the budget, but what we were hearing was not the term taxpayer, but here's what the city can do to recover the SCA 1 money. It was kind of focused in that direction, and people were like, what about, you know, the state wanting to benefit taxpayers? So in this budget presented with a reduction, the value of your home from last year, if you had a modest home and the value was, as they come down from actually, you know, on the, on the county's papers, if it was $332,000, you're going to save 33 cents. But your value of your home went up probably 17%, and that was confirmed at the meeting I went to on September 8th. So people know, I know y'all look at this, this is wonderful and positive, but there are people who are pinching to get these tax dollars paid and everything else is going up. So 33 cents, actually, the increase on that modest home is $404 for the year with the lower rate. But mind you, the lowering of the rate is .0001 cents, okay? So with all the growth in AV, and I'm aware of the $625,000, we're wondering just, you know, what kind of a break are the taxpayers, the single-family homeowners getting? Looking at, I know we have a special census coming up at some point, hopefully, and then we'll have redistricting when we go to a third class, a second class from third class. But the people are just saying, are we truly going to get any break on our taxes? And they're, they're not seeing it as, they're calculating, and I don't mind coming to speak about it, because I've been doing this for 30 years, so I will do it again as a, as a past CPA. Also, when we're looking at how are we going to cut money and what have you, I think this year, and correct me if I'm wrong, or give me some better detail, but I think we've given as a city, as taxpayers, $20 million to the downtown Westfield nonprofit on economic development, and that's a good chunk of money. I realized that the numbers that I could find showed that we started this, this time with...
That's three minutes.
That was three minutes? You didn't put anything up there at all for me to watch? Oh, okay, well. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else this evening that'd like to make public comment on our public hearing? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:47 PM this evening. Our next order of business is city council comments. Councilor McCarty, APC update.
Yeah, just real briefly on our consent agenda, we had a new Cintia Bank on State Road 32 west of Slim Chickens, and then our only workshop item was ordinance 2546, the lantern commons PUD amendment 2, which will be back at our next EPC meeting for a recommendation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening?
Today, we held the finance committee meeting and went through the normal reports of the revenue fund and appropriation summary, and just a short update on the budget preparation by our deputy mayor, and that was it, and concluded the meeting.
Thank you. Seen no other. Mayor?
One quick comment, I forgot, the budget is now posted online at westfieldin.gov/budget. And that was it.
Thank you. May we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned.